This meeting to order. Just, I guess, to the admin team, I do need to adjourn because they're here to take the board picture at 5:45. So, with that, I will kick it off with super good day.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have our first discussion on follow-up to the cellphone study kind of timeline presented at your last meeting in turn and also with our book and our kind of our book study that we invited the community to read along with us. And so I have a couple of questions eventually here to kind of just get us started, but I had a couple of things from just kind of off the top to say. One was, I would want people to know, you know, it's important to look at other resources other than just one title. And here in a second, I'll kind of list off a few different ones that people can peruse or check out. Some of them have even been sent by you guys, or I'm sure you've seen posted online as additional resources. And so I think we want people to know, you know, everything is not contingent on what's in the book. And I think most importantly, we would, just like any piece of literature that we work within our schools, you know, we're not endorsing the work in its entirety or all the statements that are included in the book. Some of the author's comments, in particular on page 165, could be harmful to some members of our community, and some have communicated that to us, that it has been harmful to them. And so again, we're not endorsing what the author says in this section or others for that matter, but I think I'd want our trans community here, we're reaffirming our support to them, and that is constant and unwavering. But I know personally for me, it was a good reflection point on how hard the job is for our teachers every day, right? We ask them to teach a lot of different texts and a lot of different resources in their classroom, and those deal with controversial topics oftentimes that people have very different opinions on, and we ask them to handle that in a professional way. So I think there's a great opportunity for us to model that to our community in a way that we can talk about it, a book, and we can deal with passages that we don't agree with, some that are even harmful or offensive to people, and we can still talk about the parts that do maybe cause us to have some thinking or some opportunity for improvement in our system. And so with that, I think the other resources, you know, are just a couple of things that I've come across that I think would be important for people to know, be other thought leaders on the subject. You know, I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with Brene Brown and Adam Grant, you know, two kind of key thought leaders in our society right now. I think they have good resources and good takes, whether it's a podcast you listen to or even some of their short takes that they put out in an article fashion. There's a couple of movies that have also pulled together some information and research. Screenagers is one that got shared with us. The Social Dilemma is a Netflix movie that was put together that deals with kind of just our new environment and landscape that we live in, in this digital age. And then a couple of podcasts. If Books Could Kill is a podcast that reviews the anxious generation and kind of gives a flip side to probably what you would find in the book. That would be another, I think, key resource for folks to check out, just to get a divergent view, to challenge their thinking. And then another podcast, the title of the podcast is You're Wrong, or What You're Wrong About. And it's, then the episode is Phones Are Good Actually with Taylor Lawrence. And so that was another one that has been shared online. I personally have not seen all of these or viewed them all, but again, they're resources shared with us, and I think just in the effort of trying to make sure we communicate out, hey, here's some different things you go look at. Again, there could be something in one of those resources, right, that is uncomfortable or that we don't agree with or don't support, but at the same time, they deal with the topic. So it's important to share that. And then finally, I think we get to the part where we get to discuss a little bit. And so, you know, this is an opportunity for the board to have a conversation about what we agreed with checking out part one, one of the shorter parts of the book, as we'll work through this sequence. And so maybe just kind of open it with any general thoughts or impressions that you had on kind of that first part of the book. And then I have a couple of other questions, just to keep us going and see how the conversation flows.
I'll go first. At, just very high level, the stuff that's in this book or any of those other things you just mentioned, right, it goes to the why. And I don't, I'm not going to speak for everyone here, but I think the why is kind of understood, that there's an issue that needs to be addressed, and I don't know that there's going to be a lot of fight on the why. So I'm not sure that anything in here is going to tell me yes, we should do something or no, we shouldn't. I think we're already there. It's the what we're going to do and how we're going to do it that is going to be the hard part and the heavy lift for all of us. And so that's kind of the sense I got from that, and like, reading through, looking at charts, and there's data, I'm like, yeah, agreed. There's an issue, right? But, I mean, maybe later on in the book, they give us great ideas of what to do and how to do it, because that's the part where I'm really going to struggle, not just as a board member, but as a human that is attached to their phone like everyone else here. You can see phones out on the table, right? Like, it's the way we are now, and so how we put something into place is going to be as important as why we're doing it.
I agree. That was my, that was kind of my thought process, too. And the mental health piece, I think, is really obvious, and I'm sure, I know that's very true. I think part of our why, though, has to be to engage kids more in instruction, and that's something we can get our hands around, you know? We can try to measure that, are they more engaged, maybe? I don't know. But just the mental health piece is just huge, and I understand it, I believe it, but I'm not sure it's necessarily what we have to think about when we're crafting a policy, when we're crafting what we're actually going to do. I think we have to think about engagement and instruction, and maybe bullying and fighting and some of those things that we can get our hands around.
That was one thing we even talked about, was just being clear on what's the problem we're trying to solve, you know? It made me think of that again, Molly, when you said that, like, okay, are we clear on what is the problem we're trying to solve with, you know, taking on the topic? And I tend to agree with you, right? I mean, I think the biggest block that got us here is a little bit on, you know, the difficulty in our classrooms on a day-to-day basis to be able to instruct.
I mean, sure, no disagreement. Maybe the lens that some of this I was reading from, absolutely, we need to address the instruction piece. But then when you start reading about some of the age ranges, my mind started thinking about, well, shoot, these people are going to young adults, or if not young adults, and perhaps working for us. So how do some of these issues that they've grown up with, the mental health piece, the social media aspect? Once we solve the instruction piece, I think that's something that we have to keep in the back of our head to make sure that we're providing our staff with the resources they need to combat some of the same things that we're reading about, because I think the range was 2010 through 2020. 2010, they're coming to work for us. They're here.
I think what struck me in what I've read so far is, having been on the board for the last five years, we worked so hard during COVID to keep kids safe, just exhaustively, you know, thoroughly reviewing safety. And then coming out of COVID, we worked, I think tremendously hard on mental health and getting them, you know, making sure that the kids were okay from the COVID experience. We've seen the Nest at City High expanded to all of our other secondary schools, and so I feel like it's something that this district and the board has been laser-focused almost all for, again, for like the past five years, but somehow, we haven't paid any attention to this component. I don't think of mental health, and we've tried a little bit, but I don't think it's been on our radar, the preventative side and the deterrent side. We're kind of in a stage where when the symptoms happen and when the kids are suffering, I think we're doing a really good job of providing supports, but this almost gives us a blueprint for, well, how can we prevent and deter some of the problems that we're seeing so that they don't ever become problems to start with? And I think that that's a responsibility that we should be tasked with, when these kids are spending so much time in our buildings every single day, that if there are things that we can do to prevent them from experiencing anxiety, depression, mental health, we should do them. I also was struck by the line in here that sometimes we need to protect children from harm, even when it inconveniences adults, because I think that's going to be one of the challenges that we face, and I thought that was a really important message that, at least for me, that I want to send to our parents, is yes, we understand that not having constant 24-hour access to your child while in school is an inconvenience for you, but we're doing it to protect the well-being of your child.
Yeah. I think that's similar.
And for me, I'm part of that cohort of former teachers that started when texting was big, and by the time I burned out of classroom experience about 2014, so I was watching the cellphones really seep in, and there was this optimism at the time that I think is still holding on with some people, where it was, we can just adopt and adapt the cellphones to the classroom. And going through this book, and then I went through Yohann Hardy's Stolen Focus. Stolen Focus, he talks about this idea of cruel optimism. It's actually a frame by Lauren Berland, or Berlent. But it is when the desire becomes the obstacle to the flourishing. So in this case, her desire is the use of technology, right, and to use in the classroom. But the technology actually acts as the obstacle to learning. So cruel optimism is usually a term that shifts blame back on the individual for what needs to be a collective response. A lot of times, it talks about dietary fads when you get into the cruel optimism itself. But I think it really, and Yohann Hardy explains it, too, it comes to this technology situation. So, you know, it's kind of the cruel optimism that I've heard in the past from teachers by saying, well, you just need them to teach better to get the student's attention away from YouTube or video games, or whatever it might be, the cellphone. Or the students just need to be better at their time management, you need to teach students how to be better time managers in their classroom, or teach them to turn off their cellphone. And both these issues are kind of their own form of cruel optimism, because at the end of the day, whatever program or app the student is using in the classroom, whether it's on the computer or on their phone, there are thousands, probably hundreds of thousands of the best computer programmers and data analysts that are working to hook those students, and ourselves for that matter, back onto the cellphone. Like, you know, it's like that moment that the student opens up that Instagram account at 11:00 AM, I don't know what passenger it is, 11:00 AM, every day, passenger. That young lady finally, young man or young lady finally turns off their phone, or doesn't even turn off their phone, starts to ignore it, but I guarantee you, within about five days, they're going to get that push notification at 11:00 AM to remind them of that dopamine hit. And, you know, from the perspective, when I look out at teachers, I can see how cellphones are such a morale killer in the buildings, and that's kind of something that I keep on hearing. I heard it in the farmer's market this weekend, where it's like, no matter how hard we try, I'm still finding those push notifications, I'm still finding that urge to open the app and go back and look it again. I don't know, when I keep hearing, or not keep hearing, but when I, when we first posted the potential for this policy, and I see people saying, well, the teachers just need to teach the students better. I ask, I can't really go down that route anymore, especially when I talk to teachers and hear their opinions on trying to manage the cellphones, and it just, and, you know, the same with the administrators, too.
Yeah, I think it's just super, I mean, just say, teachers just need to teach better. And that was not a problem.
Yes.
Oh, I don't have much more to add. I agree with Director Williams, we have an opportunity here to positively impact the mental health of our students in a proactive way. I think it's important, we need an opportunity to be there.
I'm very much interested in trying to understand what teachers and those instructional staff have to say about cellphones in their classroom. I'm assuming that they will pay a favor of Levina in their use, and frankly, at this point, I'm not opposed to either of them. I appreciate bringing this book in front of us to describe some of the issues about mental health and maturity, how we're adversely affected by information that comes via cellphones and other electronic devices. But again, I really, I want teachers to have us have in mind for us to try to do, and hopefully that will align our school board, community, parents have in mind as well.
I am curious, moving forward to Director Istone's point, that, you know, what the policy looks like. And I haven't finished the book, because you said we only had to read part one. But there seems to be a difference between smartphones and, you know, our old flip phones or smart watches that aren't internet-connected. And I don't know if, but at the same time, does that also present issues for our teachers and staff, right? Like, who knows? But I, some of those nitty-gritty details, I'll be interested to talk about. Is there a middle ground where we can try to make some people happy so that, you know, you have, again, a flip phone, a smartwatch, so that you have this way to text? I have a hard time believing that our students are going to sit there, you know, those old phones you have to press like one three times to get a C, and then a five three times to get, you know.
I'd like to say that, but it was a district that's in the middle school classroom at the time, it was just, you'd still have those students just buried in, I know there were some who were teaching at this table at that point, and it's just like...
But it might be a way to, because there's going to be exceptions somehow, I think. Somehow, someone's going to make a case strong enough that we think, okay, you need some way to contact your kid to contact, I mean, maybe it's, I was thinking of that, too, that maybe there's some way that that could work.
And you can't access social media with those.
Correct.
Right? So I was kind of thinking along those lines as well.
Every student has a Gmail, right?
Yes.
Every student has a Chromebook. Parents can email in guard, can they not?
They can just do it.
K through six parents.
K six, they can only, it has to be in K12 ICCSD.
Yeah.
And can they Google chat each other throughout the school day, the students?
It's inactive.
Okay.
It's inactive for students. Google Chat's inactive for students, right?
I don't remember we...
Yeah, we...
Don't they get around it?
None of us do. It's because they're all using their phone. There's some other extensions.
I'm sure there's other things that they have to do, but we did, we did.
I think it just speaks to the losing battle, right? I mean, like, the kids are going to pivot and shift, like, you know, I mean, like, when there's still a technology resource to use, I mean, that's what we see, right? Whatever we try to limit, they shift to what is open, what works, and then that becomes the new frustration. I mean, I think one thing, thinking about what Lisa was talking about there, like, we probably won't, like, we won't remove every distraction from the classroom, right? But what are the most harmful, what's the biggest impact point we can have? My head, you know, similar to Sean's, jumps to, you know, the logistics of this and wanting to get into, you know, that piece right away, because I don't want to stand up with a policy we can't execute, right? And I worry a lot that, we don't want to set teachers up with false expectations, and we also don't want to set our administrators and leaders up with unrealistic expectations about what they can do, because when the teacher can't deal with the problem, they call the administrators for help, and oftentimes, it's not like the administrators have a magic solution either, right? I mean, you know, they're doing the best they can as the adult there in the scenario, and so it does become very difficult. So just, you know, kind of put a pin in that for the logistics, that I think that'll be an important thing to consider, is like, whatever we do, do, we want to make sure we can execute. And I think that's where their feedback will be critically important, right? That's why we want to hear from our admin team, that's why we want to hear from the teachers, of course, from our parents and students as well. The other kind of question I had, you know, in that first part, was there anything you disagreed with, right? Or that you'd want to know more about, you know, or something that, like, reading that and you're like, well, I'm not sure that's quite the case. I mean, some of these other resources I shared tonight do give an alternative perspective, so again, I'd encourage you maybe to kind of check some of those out, but is there anything different? Mitch kind of talked about it a little bit with, like, you know, I remember that time period, you know, 12 through 14, where we're trying to say, hey, we can embrace these, similar to other technologies, how they've hit before. I just, I think he even uses the word tidal wave at some point in this book. It just seemed like this was a whole different wave, right, an impact point to us than some of those other technologies. But with that said, any, anything you disagreed with or that you'd want to know more about?
Well, one thing I'd like us to keep in mind is that maybe the policy doesn't need to be uniform across all grade levels. What works for high school might not be ideal for middle school, you know? The one-size-fits-all policy for all grades, six through 12 is probably, you know, I think we can do better than that, you know? Keep in mind their age and what's appropriate at that age.
And logistics, too, because I agree with that. You know, I think calling or emailing my children's elementary school seems way more easy and manageable, like, to get a message to my daughter than maybe calling more central or a high school where they've got, you know, 13, 1800 kids in there. And so, you know, those concerns of, oh, we have a family situation that we need to reach out right away, you can call the office, and they will relay that message within minutes, you know, if it's a serious situation. And I also think that not only do we need a one-size-fits-all policy, but we can always tweak the policy. I mean, I feel like, and the community maybe should know, like, you know, we're rolling out something new and different, or we will be, and we may not get it exactly right to start with, and we're going to monitor and give feedback and adapt. And, you know, if we, if we were to allow X and Y, and then we see that that's not fixing any of the problems, then the next version may be just nothing. Like, you know, we're going total no device, or we start with total no devices, and all of a sudden, the, you know, City High front office is fielding 600 calls a day, and their admin team says, you know, we don't have time to do this, we need, we need something to fix this. But either, I can see either way, we have to monitor, assess, and then reevaluate, or be willing to do that.
Yeah, I do agree. This is definitely time where we need to try something, evaluate it, maybe just once.
So to answer your question, I mean, there's a lot of correlation here that gets turned into causation, and like, the whole thing is that, and his argument most of the time is, because I couldn't find anything else that would cause it, therefore, it has to be the cellphones. Like, that's on almost every single graph that's in here. I mean, there's even a graph where he superimposes, like, teenage anxiety with unemployment. It makes it look like teenage girls like unemployment, like, just the way the graphs put it. So, like I said earlier, the data that's in here is not really what's going to drive us into the point of trying something out. I think, to Molly's point and Matt's point, is what are we trying to fix? Because we are not going to put something into place and then check it out to say, did we fix mental health issues, like, within six months, right? We're not going to be able to do that. So if the goal is, are kids more engaged in classwork, like, are we getting better, I don't know, like, our teachers are saying, hey, things are going better in my classroom, and if that's our goal, that's how we measure whether we're doing something right? And how we're going to measure whether we're doing something right is then going to tell us what to do, right? And then how to tweak it over time.
Although, I'd be interested in what the rates of referral to the Nest look like. I would be interested in what are absenteeism, you know, rates, are we seeing kids coming to school more because they're suffering less from anxiety and depression? Are we seeing decreased incidences of bullying and harassment, which is, you know, a large part of social media? So I just want to push, I think that engagement is important, but I think that there are other data points that we can put our fingers on to see if the policy is having a positive impact on it.
I don't know, so if we connect it to cellphones, I mean, can we connect it to more supports that we're giving kids and awareness, I don't know.
If you use a regression discontinuity design, you throw in that date that you put a policy in place, you look on both sides of that date, it's, I've done one myself, it's not that exciting. But it's an easy way to look at on the bandwidth surrounding the policy date, whether there are changes in referrals, or changes in whatever it may be that you want to look at.
I mean, I think we should keep an eye on that data anyway, just...
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I assume that.
Regardless of if you think it's directly related to our cellphone policy, or it's, I don't know.
Well, and an interesting point, that's about data, maybe, that's something you're talking about, is you might see spikes in the other direction because of the change, because of what you talk about, how ingrained it is in their, in their being right now, is are those resources being used more? So the Director Istone's point, is three months long enough, is six months long enough? How long do you actually have to track it? Because you don't necessarily know if the data will get in the first 30 days, the first 90 days, will reflect what the long-term benefits, corporate changes of the policy could be.
I just have another thought, like, with attendance, would you actually have some kids not come? You know, if you restrict that, it would be the opposite.
Yeah, they stop showing up.
There's data in here, right, about what time of day kids are interacting at, right? And that our focus naturally goes to that, what are they doing in, you know, eight to four? But they're using them, doing all the same things in the evenings, in the middle of the night, apparently, a lot, right? Like, we can't stop that. So all of those things that are affecting kids in a negative way are still going to be there. We're looking at it in a tiny window of time. So all things being equal, that stuff is bad all the time. Also, during the school hours, it's impacting how they're learning, right? So it's like the extra push that we really need to keep in mind.
It's kind of an interesting point you're on, though, right, is like, okay, what are the success criteria for us, right? Like, what would success criteria look like? And I mean, we've kind of talked about these two pieces of instruction and mental health, right, that those are two important pieces that we hope to positively impact by this, and then what would be those data points we would try to look at to show, you know, some kind of energy around the change, right? Or what do those data points tell us? I mean, like, these guys were saying, I think it would be fair to anticipate some increased absences, to anticipate some increased mental health concerns because of the anxiety to not have it. Now, again, what's that trajectory look like over time could change, but I think what is success criteria, or just even criteria we want to monitor, right, to monitor during the, you know, the before and after, like Mitch was talking about.
I do think our teachers are going to be in a great position to provide feedback on whether or not the students are more engaged in the classroom. I mean, so I would almost be interested in a qualtrix before the policy goes into place, but after, you know, after the school year kind of gets going for a couple of weeks, and then a qualtrix with them, 30, 16, whatever, a period of time, enough time to let the policy start to, and then see what the teachers think. It's probably not, like, statistically valid, but I, they know what's going on in their classroom.
It's qualitative anyway, right? Even if it's not perfectly qualitative.
I did take a look at, and I knew, I thought I knew, that all the cellphone policies we already have, like, at the elementary and, you know, here, all it is, and, you know, they're basically all fine, like, you can use your cellphone during class time at lunch, while schools and session, I mean, you know, we have the, I mean, we've said something, but I think, they're all different, I guess, but like Liberty, they can use them during study hall, but other schools, they can't, and that. Portate has no electronics, so somehow, we need to fix some of this. I mean, and really, what we're looking at more is how we're, how we're going to enforce it, because it cannot be a teacher's battle in the classroom to fix this, in my opinion. We just can't do that, because there's not, there's not time, there's not, the relationships suffer, there's so many issues there. So I think we have sort of, you know, I don't know, we got to fix the policy of doing the study hall or not, or lunch, or class time or not at all, and we have to have them all be the same, and then how are we going to make it happen? What are the steps we're going to take to make it happen? And that's the hard part, it's where I get stuck. I had a former teacher, she suggested to me that teachers could just, when they saw kids using their phone, they could just send it to somebody, and then when that kid was seen four times, then somebody else did something. I mean, I don't, I just don't... I mean, I don't, I just don't, I get stuck there, maybe that's going to that part too fast.
I think the not having the teacher's problem to enforce is very important. I think along with that, though, and Matt, you and I talked about it when we met last, that there needs to be expectations for the adults in the building also, because it's not just kids that are attached to their phones, right? We all are, and, you know, it'd be awfully hard, particularly if you're gonna say, okay, teachers take phones away from kids that are using it, and then the teacher goes and answers a text message.
Yeah.
You can't.
Which happens, I'm sorry.
And I'm not saying nobody gets to touch any pieces of electronic, right? Like, that's, it's not realistic, so it is a hard, it's hard to wrap your head around what you do. And then there's gonna be, I think there's, well, I know there's kids, because there was one classroom I was in that used their phone as part of their IEP.
Right.
It's for like translation services, and so you're gonna have some kids with phones, and other kids not with phones. Like, it's going to be imperative that it's very clear what the rules are, and very clear what the consequences are, and very clear who's enforcing.
And then they need to be consistently enforced as well.
There's a lot of things you can do with your Chromebook, like, some IEP combinations, are you listening to music? I think you can figure out how to do that with Chromebook, I might never realize that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, or you, I don't know about translating on Chromebook, yes, okay. And so there might be ways around, well, I was thinking about IEP combinations, I think there might be.
Yeah, every student has immersive reader on their device, so it allows the ability to read and write as well as the type.
Yeah.
The one thing, you know, I just put out there, and I've told some of you this, as we've talked about it, as you think about these policies, is, we've been writing cellphone policies for, you know, a decade plus, right, about how to do it, and we've tried to put healthy parameters in there, and we have, we're a people organization with people that try to enforce it, and we get inconsistencies. And we are where we are today because of the ineffectiveness, not just of the policies, but our ability to follow through on our own policies, and we're not the only district talking about it, right? I mean, it's, that's how hard it is to execute it. And so that's, that's something that is worrisome to me about when we talk about, well, how do we find a middle ground, right? Because I think we've been trying to find the middle ground, I think we've been trying to teach, like, here's what responsible use looks like, use it during passing time, use it during lunch. That's what most of those policies Molly's referring to have said, and that we've tried to do, and we're still here talking about it, right? We're still here talking about the problem because, not because people have bad intentions or aren't trying hard, it's a, it's a losing, but it's that tidal wave, right, effect, it's just like, it's, or the notifications Mitch was talking about that are just programmed to hit the kids, right? And so it's like a constant losing battle about trying to find the sweet spot. I feel like we've been trying to find the sweet spot, and so the concerning thing for me is just, you know, how drastic potentially a change we need to make, and what that would look like, and, because I feel like it'll be easy for us as a group here at the district level to say, well, let's try this, this sounds like it'll be, you know, somewhat acceptable to everybody, there's a little bit, you know, of enforcement, there's a little bit of time for them to use. I just tell you, I think what you're gonna hear from our administrators and teachers is that doesn't work. We've already been doing that.
And I think it's important that, at one of these, that we have those people around the table, especially the ones that's taking part and reading the book with us, because I, I'm not comfortable just as a single board member not creating a policy without hearing from building administrators, without hearing from teachers who have dealt with this issue, and not, you know, I want a good sort of swath of those folks, not the ones that easily or we hear from often.
Yeah, I think that, you're exactly right, President Malone, I think that feedback would be crucial, the surveys and to just hear some of that voice, and, you know, I think we're fairly representing the things that we hear from them, but just hearing those personal stories about how challenging that is and why it's challenging, you know, even about, okay, what are the idiosyncrasies of it that make it really hard to enforce that, so.
One of the, one of the issues that I ran into when I was teaching those many years ago is that taking the cellphone away and sending it to the office, what, how do you do that without getting any ticky tack, suspensions and detentions? You take away that phone every day, the kid, the child brings it back to school, gets on it again, keeps on happening over and over again, and they keep bringing it back, how do you, how do you handle that as a building administrator? But I can tell you the way we handled it as a teacher was just, let him go on my phone. And I've heard that from teachers in this district. There's just, I'm, I'm done fighting that, they're going to make their own bed, and even if I send it to the administrator, the administrator doesn't do anything about it, you know, I can understand, because it's, we have, as Director Williams said, thirteen to eighteen hundred students in these buildings, and cell phones going in, I just, like, I looked at Ankeny's policy, and this is not to drag on Ankeny by any means, but, and I looked at it, I'm just thinking to myself, how do you enforce that without suspensions or detentions? Whether it's in school or not, and that's why my brain, it just keeps going back to those things like yonder couches, or some sort of check-in and checkout, and, yeah, I'm not saying, the administrative staff at Liberty City, Southeast, Liberty, you know, all those wanna check in, eighteen hundred cell phones at the end of the day, in the end of the day, but I don't know how you get around.
Or FTE.
The, yeah, one FTE.
One FTE.
We can charge the technology fund. To, I don't know how you get around it.
But we're laughing about that, but I also don't think it's unrealistic to think about, like, somebody will have to manage the logistics of that, you know, and it'll either divert time from staff doing things now, but there's also probably an anticipated benefit from that, right? I mean, you're not devoting those resources at another time of the day to deal with problems that come from technology and phones, but I do think that resource allocation piece is wise to think about. Same thoughts that Director Lingo had, is, you know, I mean, how do you do this? How would you do something in between without tons of suspensions? We know we don't like to remove kids from instruction additionally and have more suspensions, so then if that's not a tool, then what does become the downfall, right? And I think that's, again, kinda where we've been living about the battle it's, it's created. So, I think those are all wise things to be thinking about, because that is gonna be probably the, you know, sausage we have to make out of this a little bit, is like, okay, how are we gonna put all that together? And I also appreciated what Director Williams said about, like, trying something and then also not feeling like we have to be tied to it forever, right? I do think we would need to give it a go and have some kind of a committed time that we're gonna stick in it, but at the same time, being able to acknowledge, like, hey, we're just trying to figure this out, right, and that it may, may take some adjustment along the way.
Are there other districts that have done surrender policies?
Well, they're, they're starting here soon, right? I mean, I, that's why I do like our timeline, that, you know, we're not trying to just ramp this thing up on August twenty-third when we bring students back, that I think we'll get some data points from other districts this fall that have tried to do some additional limitations, and we'll be able to bring that back as we continue to talk about how that's going. And then, you know, that can inform, you know, where we end up too, Charlie, but I think, you know, by the time we're done with this, and I'm, I'm due to give you guys some recommendations based off your conversations and feedback from other groups, you know, I think we'll have some good information from them.
Good.
Well, and I'll, I'll look back to Director Abraham's point, you know, we have robust cellphone policy on the books, that is absolutely a massive failure. And so for at least where my head's at is, is we can't just say, no, we really mean it, this is the policy. It's, we've got to make that policy stronger and more robust and more restrictive, and so that's just kind of where I'm starting with, you know, where's our baseline? Our baseline is what we have now and what we know isn't working, so.
If you try to look for policies and they say, you know, this school banned cell phones, well, it's not different than ours, it's said, you know, they have to be silenced before you get in the classroom or whatever, and so it's not banned yet, it's not, you have to figure out how to enable it.
But there's a difference between saying you can't use a phone and not have it, if you say you can't have a phone.
Right, exactly. If you say you can't have one.
That makes the, that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's key also that, based on a lot of the information that we're leaning from the book, and whatever policy we come up with, I don't know how useful it is just to email that out to our parents and guardians and the adults in our house. I think as a district, we have to really start thinking about, I don't know if it's education stuff, look at me like that, Sean, education sessions with board members, or with building administrators, or it, we have to get in front of parents, like, in front of them, and walk through the policy, and really create that partnership here, and talk about, this is why we're moving toward this in our school building, because a lot of comments I saw on social media was like, well, if it's an active shooter, I wanna be able to contact my kid. Like, that's the worst time you should be calling your kid, if they're in the middle of an active shooter, because they're not listening to the adult in the room, phone might be going off, I mean, that, you don't call when you hear that. I know as a parent, that would probably be my first instinct, but no, don't say because of that, but I get it. So, if, we, we have to figure out a way to get this information in front of our families, because not all of our families are reading this book, not all of them even know that we're doing this. I mean, we have to figure out a way to get in front of them. And I'm sorry, we're getting close to time, probably two more.
I, I'll just say, I would, I went on the public library, and there's two hundred and fifty people waiting to check out the book, and all of the online and the audiobooks and the physical books are checked, so I am encouraged that a lot of members of our community have taken advantage of the opportunity to read along with us, and, and many more want to, so I was, I was happy to see that.
I'd like to add one thing to the read, if anybody wants a really good concise, clear report that's quickly made, I send it to board members, I send it to Superintendent Diner, you wanna send it to the administrative team. A custom companion, A Week in the Life of Young Person's Smartphone Use, it's a study that came out of Common Sense Media and the Children's Hospital at the University of Michigan, where they were able to access two hundred and three pre-teen to teenagers' cell phones and watch the time used throughout the day and the notifications throughout the process, and put it together in this report. They, they estimate that students typically receive fifty-four push notifications while in the classroom during the school day. The average, the median student spent forty-three minutes on their cellphone throughout the school day. The high was the entire school day a student spent on their cellphone, so.
Yeah, it was easy, really, then interesting, thank you.
Yeah. Next steps.
So, you know, every meeting, we kinda have this series down to touch base on, where we've been actively working on trying to get that first survey put together and out to the administrators per the timeline, so that'll be going out here soon in August, and then the next iteration's supposed to go to teachers early as well, and so those feedback pieces from the surveys will probably come kinda late in the line of your conversations here. I think something, you know, maybe I'll talk to you guys about in between is, like, how soon do you wanna get into some logistic conversation? Because it sounds like that's where a lot of your heads went right away, that, you know, I'll ask you to have part two done by the time we meet again, you know, there's kinda four chunks to it, we'll, we'll take the next part, but our, our conversation quickly went to what do we do, right? And so it seems like there's a little bit of alignment and thinking we need to do something, and something additional needs to happen, not trying to rush you on that, but if, if that's where we're at, then that might cause us to either prepare, put some things in front of you differently as we progress through this, if that's where we're at. I think we'd still do, it's good to obviously work our way off, all the way through this and to talk about each section, but we can start to work in some more logistic details as we go along too, and I see some heads nodding, so, so we'll try to take that as feedback to us. And then, yeah, I mean, I, I think the final thing I'd say is President Malone bringing up the point about community input and, you know, kinda what, what you'll wanna do, and maybe that's just kinda food for thought for the next time, or what your expectations would be for us about, okay, what, you know, what does that communication look like? Because I do think, my, my general sense is the greatest resistance from this, other than kids, of course, is gonna be parents, right, just, you know, and what to do with that, right? Because their norm to a, a certain way about communicating and accessing their kid during the day that, that will change, right, and have an impact point on them, and so, you know, how do we make sure they understand the why and the approach and know that we're trying to see those partners in this work, not that we're doing something to them? But with that, thanks for the conversation.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment.
All those in favor? I'm meeting adjourned, picture talk.